We're good.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you. District one, Councilman Reals.
Present.
District two, Councilman Castor is excused. District three, Councilman Leatham.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton is excused. District five, Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
District six, Councilman Chipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamaras.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Julie. I'd like to chief Robinson up for the picture.
Our Father and Son, great one to be, for the blessings that we have. We're grateful for this community, for the efforts that they put in to make this a great place. We're grateful for those individuals who work to serve the citizens of this community, keep them safe and to help provide those services there. We're grateful for those representatives who have been elected to help guide the direction of the city. We ask that thy blessings be with them as they deliberate this decision that they made. Please watch over all those families in our community that year. These things we pray for, and that's what Jesus Christ.
All right. Great, you do the blessings, man.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, every third event, Tennessee, you probably hear of it?
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have any news there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I went to the school over the weekend as a participant. And it's first time for me, just probably enjoyed myself. I got a summer, lots of exercise, and took a nap on the stage last, so we're out of here. I want to do this again, so just like.
Yeah.
Um, I'd just like to congratulate Mary Ann Moreno, she won Citizen of the Year. And, um, I actually nominated her and me and a couple other people, and I wrote the letter. And we thought she had never won, but it turns out she actually won Citizen of the Year in 1997. Well, one thing that I learned is if you ever want to get rid of a great volunteer, give them a plaque. Because at some point, they feel like that means that they've accomplished operations to accomplish, and then you don't see them anymore. So, I don't, if you're really good, I don't give you a plaque. But Mary Ann Moreno won Citizen of the Year, Tony Bowden, you know, and you never stop being involved in communities that she wanted to get, so it's like some gesture. And Chamber of, a really nice event. That's it, man.
Thank you, Freddie. Um, I just wanted to, again, bring to light the work that's going on, the big projects that we've been talking about for years. Uh, and when they're coming to fruition, we're actually seeing a lot of the work in, you know, Hill Street School, every time I pass by, I'm just, you know, just, uh, in awe about it. Uh, I, even demolition, though, it looks better than it looked before. Uh, so, uh, it's just, it's just nice to see that, you know, these projects are coming to life. I know we have the Hill Street School project, we still have Conners Bridge Law. Uh, there's so many people, um, you know, it's just, it's a joy to see that all the work and the effort, that all the people that, and the stakeholders that have been behind this, um, it's really starting to go further now. It's not just a thought or, or a budget, it's, it's actually happening. So, I just wanted to thank and congratulate everybody that had been through the deal. And best wishes moving forward also. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Freddie. Just want to announce, uh, the town hall, I'm gonna have a request later on, meeting. On the 25th of, uh, July, the Hilda Community College is having the town hall. And that's in regard to the contract with Eastern Airline. Uh, we really need to pay attention and find out what's going on between, uh, the two colleges. Uh, if we lose our college town, the community is devastated. So, we need to be aware of it, and have the town hall here in the, at the college. It'll be on Tuesday night, on the 25th, I prefer. Uh, but take a look at the paper, take a look at the social media, get all the information you can. And, uh, I will think that we do really need to educate ourselves, like, for not to hear them forward. I guess, so, so, really get educated about it. I got a lot of calls from them, they know much about it, I made a bunch of calls, and I know a lot about the city. Uh, get yourself educated. Uh, also, on the 4th of July, Miami's having a break. Uh, we aren't having anything in Globe, so we encourage anybody that wants to participate in their activities on the 4th of July, that will be next Tuesday. So, uh, we encourage that. Also, along with the Citizen of the Year, just mentioned Business of the Year Day itself, being awarded that night with La Casita, uh, buffet restaurant, was the Business of the Year Day. And they served the dinner that night, it'll be a great dinner, and, uh, we, you know, just want to acknowledge them, Business of the Year. Also, we're continuing our work towards a rural policy forum. Uh, we continue to make contacts in, uh, securing, uh, places to stay, securing places for the tour, securing places for, uh, having the event, and also, um, just getting, uh, the vendors approved on a different date. So, it's coming together. I know it's a lot of work, and the committee, and our even, our city staff is doing some of the work. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna take some work to get the legislation done. And that's all I have.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, a lot going on, a lot of, uh, projects out there, a lot of projects wrapping up, more money coming in. Um, it's, it's all on the agenda tonight. Um, I just want a quick shout out to everyone in the city who's been supporting the Finance Department. Um, right now, we're, we're back down to a Finance Department of one. Um, but we're working on staffing back up and, and rebuilding that. Um, and, uh, so, but, but I'll tell you, there's so many people are pitching in, uh, to help and, and carry that weight, and make sure that, that we get everything done. Uh, and that's not just in city administration, but out in the departments, in, in Fire, Public Works, and PD, uh, and in, uh, you know, Beche and the library. Um, there, everybody's doing their part to, to make sure that, that we don't overload finance. And, and there's a lot that goes on with the, the transition from one budget cycle to the other. Um, so, we're, um, so anyway, uh, it's been a real team effort, and, uh, so far, we're, we're keeping it going. We got some changes we're asking for tonight, but I just a shout out to all those people helping making the, the, you know, keeping the finances flowing. There, that's it. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
We have a first community call to the public, if anybody in the audience who wants to speak here, if you have anybody on the phone or email.
Let me check the email. I haven't seen anybody.
That's Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, we'll go to special presentation, the ceremonial matters, and I, three eighties council will hear an update on active city and rural construction-related projects.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. As you started off the conversation, we've got multiple projects all over Globe going on. And not, they're not only just city of Globe projects, they're affecting all of our community. So, you may get some questions upon some of these, and some of them will affect our traffic control in areas that, you know, the school district might be affected, the hospital. So, I'm just gonna kind of give a rundown on some of the information that we have at hand. And then if there's any in-depth questions, then we'll definitely follow up and get you the right answers. Uh, it's gonna take, we'll do a quick rundown. Uh, of course, our biggest projects are Cottage, Connie's Bridge Project. Uh, it's ongoing, um, of course, you know when some bridge projects started, we, we had a running creek, so that kind of set them back every other time we turned around and saw someone in that creek, trying to mitigate some of the issues that we were having. Uh, currently, they're in the process, they build the, they drilled out the post, actually, for all the, the main supports. And actually, this last week, they've been doing some core drilling, only for the fact to maintain, to check the stability of the concrete. And, uh, and right now, we're waiting for results on that, on the drill shafts. Um, so you don't see a lot of activity, because we're actually depending on those reports before we move further. This last week, they actually tased all the main water line in that, and they were working on that last week. Right now, with the schedule-wise, they're probably, originally, we talked about September as a, you know, uh, finish date. Right now, they're kind of right into October. Uh, the only thing that, we, of course, we're all gonna keep our fingers crossed, we're getting right, ready for the monsoon season. So, we have creeks forming, we know that calendar's probably gonna change. Um, so, but they're, right now, they're still really on task, we have a weekly meeting with staff and give updates. Um, so that's basically where we're at, and they're still scheduling for December, for completion date in December. You know, so they're, they're really sitting on task in what they've got going, so, and the communication is very well with them and our staff, so we're, we're just still confident. We haven't had, had any other unlightened issues, other than some of our water location. And, uh, we've had staff out there on different, you know, we found some lines out there that weren't even on maps, which is pretty typical of our area, um, and we've just dealt with those, and we keep with that project going. Um, the community center pool, uh, last week, we met with structural, as far as, uh, creating a punch list and getting some of the final items on the punch list organized, so they can start, they can come in and do their final work as far as getting the pool situated. And then, at that point, once that part is done, then we'll actually start transferring over into our, our, all of this, I got lost with words there. Our warranty. Um, so we're transitioning on that, um, but there is some small things on our punch list that me and Paul Manwood James on that. And there, we may be affected one day, because actually, they're possibly, we're possibly looking at possible closure of the pool for one day, so we can bring all the contractors in and have all the work done in one day, so it's not affected for the progress of the pool, you know, or continuous closing, we know that's not what we want to do right now. Uh, the other project, as you noticed, we mentioned it last council meeting, and we're about there on the city hall outside. If you walked up, you'd really notice the groundwork's coming along and getting to the point of final. It should be completed by the end of the month, but we're on back order. Of course, many of other, other products is our benches and, uh, the tables. So, you see people out there, I always feel bad when I see people standing there watching their kids, or we at least have that patch of grass that they can sit there, but not everybody can share that. Um, so that's almost completed, it should be completed by the end of this month. But the parts and the, like I said, the playground equipment are still on back order, what's left of that, you know, that contract. Another project, which is not really City of Globe, is Hospital Roundabout. That project actually is stated to be, uh, be mobilized mid-July. So, you're gonna really be, uh, the hospital's gonna be affected. Um, and like I said, we'll keep you updated on that, with some PSAs and such, you know, such, because there's so much traffic, including the county, so we'll probably work with them to see if we can put up some type of message board with the contractor before, between the county and the city, I think we should probably be able to put something out there. Um, that way, it's reminding everybody for that same traffic. You know, I think it'd be smart to do that, but they'll start their project here within the next month. I don't have that much more on that, because it's not really ours, but we, we have staff that's sitting on those meetings as well. Um, the Hill Street School, you know, that one, Councilman Reals, you, like you mentioned, I, I see all the windows gone, and it, that's a good feeling for me, only for the fact that I've been getting phone calls for at least the last 15 years of them pulling out. Um, so that takes care of that problem. A lot of work there, uh, June 6th, the city applied, actually, they applied for a permit with us, and we actually did poorly for the traffic plan and the right-of-way permit that was issued to them. So, that's when you saw the fence he put up, and then the garden was enclosed at that point. Fortunately, Debbie Yurkovich has been maintaining that after Dottie. She was able to save a lot of the, the green plants and stuff, and seeds and all that, she's gonna be replanning and stuff at some point. I know on the original plans, when we met with the contractor, they're wanting to still bring something back in, in that same favor of a memorial area. So, I, I believe at that point, once it's getting closer to completion, I'll give you a better report of what's, what they did include a lot of the landscape in that same area, to keep that, you know, traditional look to it. Um, Michaelston Building, Sun Valley Builders, uh, this one I'm not too familiar with, but they're planning on coming in July 10th, mobilizing to start fencing that area off on the sidewalk, so it will affect some of our sidewalk traffic, but they postponed the start date. That way, we're not blocking off that area for our first Friday events, we're actually gonna start the week after. Uh, but there will be possible some creek closures once they're bringing in equipment to, with the oyster lifts that are gonna affect, you know, bringing in equipment for the roof. Um, so, we'll definitely put some, make sure we put some PSAs out, because it's gonna affect the traffic going the safe way, and a lot of, a lot of the traffic for the post office, it's just, we have a lot of delivery trucks that actually come through that area, so we're gonna be some, some serious restrictions, so we'll make sure we stay on there as well. Um, the Adon Highway Lighting Project, that one kind of seems like it's been at a standstill, and that was the lighting project from around Horn Main Street, that's where they're issuing by Friday, they're adding that line on. Um, they've got everything in place, um, but they're still waiting, same thing, uh, the lights, they're backordered. So, basically, they're just waiting for that point, once those parts are delivered, they'll complete that project, and then they will turn, be turning that over to the city, so that'll be for the city to maintain. Uh, so it's definitely, you know, it's a great add-on to that area, it's, it's been in need for quite some time. Um, another project we have is the Just Haste Project, we'll be talking about that later as well. Uh, it's still in the planning stages, as you're aware, we got the funding to come from the Connie's Bridge to continue all the way to the community center. Uh, one of the things that we're also be looking at as far as into, you know, we're bringing the contracts to you for our, for engineers, I don't call them engineers, and such, this is that type of project that we're gonna be utilizing for. Uh, but one of the things I did mention to our, our staff this morning is, I really want to make sure that we ensure in the design additional lighting, because if you come down that road, it's, it's pretty dark, all the way to community center. You know, community center's set up with the pool and everything really nice now, but we want to make sure that we include some type of lighting in that project to enhance for pedestrian traffic, not just during the day, it's for the evening as well. Uh, our Forest Street Waterline Project, yes, sir.
So, does the funding that we have already incorporated, like, to put some lighting in, or is that something that we're gonna, we're gonna look at?
Uh, once we get the design, uh, it's not actually, I, I believe, well, what's, the funding that we originally put in from Rick and probably, because we worked with Jerry on this tremendously, um, was more geared towards the sidewalk and the utilities and stuff. We know utilities are in, we, the water lines have been replaced, you know, the asphalt's been replaced in that area. Um, so it would be more geared towards the sidewalk, but we feel actually that we can come under the funding, way under the funding that says, it's probably bold to say that right now. Um, but, uh, the funding that we do have for, and I believe that we can actually incorporate some additional lighting. Uh, I've actually reached out to APS today, talked about two different situations I'm having. One of those is what they may recommend for us moving forward, so I can add that in. It may be a joint venture with APS, because they're already in line and servicing, you know, those other lights down the road. So, it might be a matter of enhancing additional, the lighting that we have existing and adding some onto that, or we actually just go for, it's kind of like what they're doing on the highway. You know, that's one project, but actually, they're turning that over for, to us, once it's completed. So, we would be looking at both of those, but honestly, I couldn't answer completely until we get the design.
And John, that project is a partnership with the county, right?
Yes.
So, it's something that that may be a possibility of, you know, we're talking with that contractor, that's, this one beyond the community center, I think it's going all the way. Or Six Shooter Canyon.
I'm not sure how far.
I think it's about Cherokee. Wasn't it about Cherokee, right? It's kind of tied into where they started on there, so it's right at that point, I suppose, it was.
Um, so there's that. Um, I was going into the Forest, Forest Street Waterline Project, where the old East Globe School's at. Uh, we've got that currently out to bid. Um, that's for waterline replacement. If you've ever gone and gone on the highway there, you see it's water running down off the hill into the highway. It's just a bad area, and that's why we put that out to bid, because, uh, the asphalt work that's gonna need to be done in conjunction with the waterline, and also with, um, Adon right-of-way. Uh, there's many concerns there, many safety issues, it's always been, uh, you know, concerning when we have water running on into the highway, especially in the winter months, it's become pretty icy, where we've had to put salt out there until we make the repair. Uh, that's a two-inch line. Uh, we, we discussed about upsizing the line, uh, because of the school, there was any, you know, years, if we're looking at, uh, uh, building onto the school, or adding on with the remodel school, and they have discussed that previously. But we actually have a six-inch line that runs behind the school, that they runs their fire system, we have a hydro back there. So, that would actually probably be a better access point, because it's a level area and it's, it's, it is accessible. So, that's why we only, that's why we kept that, right now, we're servicing the residents only. So, that's, that's, that's also good right now, and that would be closing here soon, uh, so we'll come back to you once we actually get to the point of contract. Um, another project is their cemetery project, because we know that's still ongoing. Uh, Tony Bowden's brother in the cemetery was able to clean some area, but we gained a little bit of space, so we actually have a little bit more spots, but we will run out. Um, so, this has been in the design phase for quite some time with brick engineering. They've given us some designs, and we're basically to the point that we're ready to, we'll bring to you, go out to bid. Um, and then the design works, we just really have to decide on the waterline and such. So, that's, if we're gonna do, to do that in-house, or that's gonna be part of it. Right now, it's actually part of the scope, uh, so we're gonna sit down and, you know, look at that, especially when bids start coming in, we're gonna really look to what's gonna be available for our staff to do as opposed to contract it out, or what would come in. Um, the last three I actually had was, uh, completion of Dickinson Waterline, that's been ongoing. We're always having waterline issues and breaks out there, that's completed. You know, um, Pluswell, uh, that was an issue where we had waterline breaks, waterline was brought it out. Um, and then that actually transferred into a sewer line issue, where we're having to sort back up into residents, um, and, you know, any given day. So, those two issues were taken care of as well. Um, and lastly, the main, uh, the Councilman Stapleton was here, he remembers that, plusmore, he'd drive by, he'd see water running down the street, and that's been taken care of as well, because that was a regular, uh, waterline issue. So, those three are knocked off our list, and, um, you know, that's a good thing, it's, it minimizes staff having to come out on weekends overtime, and residents actually being on the weekends, because it's ongoing. These are, these were three main waterlines that we're just continuously pulling out and servicing. Um, uh, that's basically all I have right now, unless there's any other projects that you can think of I didn't include.
John, how about the, uh, with the previous sewer line, tied in, or all that, the facilities out there?
Yeah, all the, all the, the patchy underground completed there, they will be coming to back. We have a couple of areas that are inspected, and Luis has pointed out as far as asphalt work that needs to be done. So, that's being, will be scheduled, so they can come in and can finalize that asphalt work. When they were actually paving, there was, it was raining the very day before, actually, that morning. So, there are some areas that it actually, the moisture got the better of the asphalt in the sun. So, those have been pointed out to them, so they'll be coming back in our area. Once they schedule that, then we'll put the PSA out for that as well. But, uh, all the sewer tie-ins and everything else is completely, community center, just in time right before the pool opened. All that's tied in, the T-Ball Field was a girls' club for the youth club, uh, is tied in, so it's, it's running good right now.
So, one more question on the veterans part, you said something about the benches and tables are coming in still. Is there any plans to put, like, a cathedral, what is, what is the plan for that big Stevens Lab out there?
That, that, Mayor, that was the original plan, where we have that, um, we're still, that'll be worked into this fiscal budget. When we talked about some of it, we, but we had it included in original scope, then we had to scale some of it back. And then we got to the point that actually, in the last year, that what we had were actually, have the pricing for it, and that's, that pad is actually built to the size of what we're priced now, it was sixteen by sixteen, I believe it was. Um, so that is actually prepared for that, we're finally, we're hoping to work that into this budget cycle, so I can be, that we can finalize that.
And will that include any shading, like, for the playground here at the community center? And then one other question for you, is when is the grand opening, when are we gonna get the ripping cutting for that facility?
We have not finalized the date, but we could probably talk about, uh, a date when we get to future, um, agenda items and scheduling meetings. That's kind of a, that would be an event, so we can, we can look at calendars.
And, uh, Mayor, just to add on the, on the shading part, uh, we have received probably in the last two weeks up to date pricing on additional shade structures. Uh, I did receive those last year, and I have them updated just two weeks ago, a week ago. And we're talking about the shade structure for the swimming pool by the splash pad. So, all that's up to date as of last week, but, uh, that would have to go through, of course, through our budget process. And we have pricing for the big, uh, playground equipment, the swings, and, uh, smaller area, but also have a shade structure for the community center, uh, that big facility, that big part of the playground equipment. So, that, we do have pricing, current pricing for it, so we can share that, you know, accordingly.
Pretty good, so.
Uh, actually, that was one of my questions, was, uh, we got any shading, but we can't, we don't have the playground, so, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, to, to John, I, I know it's, I think it's completed, but, uh, last week, you did have some barricades up there at the sixty-seventy split by the Taco Bell, do you want to talk about that?
Yes. That, that was ongoing, um, we had a water leak, as you all noticed, it was actually, did you write the center median? Uh, Vincent Escrew went out there and analyzed that, and actually, there's a sleeve that runs under the highway, there was really a sleeve and a sleeve. Um, we're still in the process, we were able to isolate, uh, the water, uh, the water maintenance across the road there. Um, we, we got lucky that we had a belt on each side. It was possibly, at some point, it was actually included a part of that as for future expansion. So, we're able to isolate that, kill that right now, but we're in the process of getting the pipe and stuff that's gonna be needed. So, I would like to, like I mentioned with them, I'd like to tie that back in, um, because right now, effectively, it's not affecting everything, but, um, I think it's just good for us, because when we're talking about isolation, if we have an issue off the highway, just like we closed this, isolated it, and we can do the opposite, we can blow the one side and keep the other side up and running, especially in the business district, the area right there. Um, we did have the traffic control extended, uh, because we actually have put smurry in there. Um, with the smurry going in, it was actually just, Luis was not confident in opening the highway with that heavy truck traffic that the, the patch would actually sink. So, we had a contractor come in and do that, but we did keep it extended over the weekend, just to make sure it had the extra dry time, uh, so we wouldn't have seen issues for Adon standards.
Got a whole lot going on, thank you.
Oh, I did have one last thing.
Okay.
Now, you reminded me, I didn't include it at the pool, we actually have the meter, thankful that, uh, Eric worked with Southwest Gas, got the account situated. We got the meter, uh, installed yesterday, um, and, uh, so that's for the heater, uh, for the pool, believe it or not, you know, when we talk about heating the pool. Um, but we still have some things that, uh, Hoss, Tim Hoss, and other questions will be out on site tomorrow, and doing some fine tuning for us, and then we'll have that up and running. We're gonna probably do some testing on it, and make sure that, you know, I, I want to do it now, sooner than later, that we have punch lists and everything else before we go into a warranty. Uh, so, uh, that's, that's almost there, I know someone, there were some questions about it last week, so we're almost there, we got the meter and everything.
One more, John, on the front of the pool also, were they, uh, they're supposed to put those, uh, uh, plaques or whatever for the contributors? Is that, what's the movement on that, are they, are we getting prices, is, when, when is that, is that, is that, is that?
Yeah, that's something that was gonna be changed order, we're gonna do that on our own, we're, uh, finalizing a design, um, and get some prices. But I, I think we may want to, um, do, get some input about, about what that looks like. Um, so, we'll, we'll get back to you on that. Okay, but we, we plan on having three plaques, the original plaque from when the pool was built, the plaque with this council, and a third plaque thanking, um, the, uh, the contributors and the people who pitched in for that. And while we're on, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we're also, we, um, are sizing, I think it was a twenty-six by twenty-six shade structure for, in the, um, splash pad area of the grass, that, that we're partnering with, uh, with, um, Cobra Valley Regional Medical Center. Uh, they're gonna put the bill, we can get that installed, and then we'll work something out on the, on the tail end. But that's another shade structure coming to the, to the pool. Um, I'll tell you, the, the, the beauty of that pool is it's so big, there's so many places to set up, and people come in and they, they get their, they get their lounge chairs or their chairs, and they huddle and make their little spaces, and it's, it's really fun to watch, the way everybody kind of stakes out their fun area to, to operate from. It, it's wonderful, we have such a large site that has so much variety, and, and, and people have their favorite areas.
And we have another pool, uh, I mean, another competition, uh, with, uh, on us, I think, Cool League just come in this weekend.
Yeah, I don't know what the, what the date is on, is it this weekend, or this Saturday? Ooh.
Yes.
Cool.
I guess the other one went well.
Yes, it did, it did, there is pop-ups everywhere, all the parents are there, and, um... And, um, no, it was, it was, it worked really well.
Really attended. And, uh, we've actually did some cleanup on the backside, if you notice on the backside of the pool and put the millions and, uh, uh, we've been working actually, uh, with Randy Sullivan, a local contractor, reached out to us. Who's gonna be working with us and helping him, like, he's gonna bring water truck and we'll do some action back there. And that'll actually help, we're on a swim team. Last first meeting, they actually had to carry everything from the back. You know, years ago they had a storage area so they can access everything. This was their first meeting, they had to carry everything from the back to the back. So we're gonna make that back part, let the back gate be more accessible so they can actually bring the stuff. That's where they start, that's where we mainly focus at. We're, we're gonna do that before the weekend. Um, and last but not least, we'll be doing some landscaping with the property too. We're kinda under some time constraints at the time, so it's pretty flat out front. I'm gonna put some landscape out front, so that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we, we, this is the first time we've done this type of agenda item where we kinda did this broad thing of what's under construction because there's so many items. We, and, and it just, we, we thought it would be kinda fun to just have, have you a chance to, to ask whatever you've seen in the way of trucks and barricades and activities. And I think it worked out pretty good, we'll probably see this come back. So, John, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have consent calendar, matters listed in consent calendar are considered future team will be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public carrying items are designated with an asterisk prior to consideration of the consent agenda. Mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove the public carrying item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may remove any item for separate consideration. We have item four A, consideration of waiver of section two that four dash ten A. Prior discussion rules will allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. A one accounts payable nine hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents. Under two, consideration of approval of council minutes on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. B, consideration to approve the facility used to allow Eastern Arizona College to utilize the city globe fire station for classroom use for fire science and EMT courses. July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And item C is consideration to approve the facility used permits to allow Eastern Arizona College to utilize the city of globe back to adult centers for classroom use for art and physical condition courses, July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Anybody from the public, the staff or the council wishing to remove any of these items for separate consideration?
There, that's true. Or B and C.
Mr. Mayor, if there are other comments or questions, I motion to reapprove, uh, consent agendas read and remove items four, B and C for further discussion.
Motion second for approval of consent minus item B and C, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those nay, if you're saying, I want to have item B, and that's a consideration for the, uh, fire station.
They kinda go hand in hand, but I just wanted to bring it up then to make sure the public is aware of this. Because what's going on, what's going on with the EAC that is not farming out their, their college to different facilities within the community? But that is, it's been ongoing, that this is correct, correct, if I'm wrong, the teach-out, right? This would be the teach-out that EAC is doing, so put a year in for them. So if, if you wanna elaborate anything on that, I don't know, I don't care.
Uh, well, I, I can, I can tell you a little bit. So we, there were some disputes between GCC, which are Pele County College Board, and EAC as far as how they're interpreting, uh, contract. And we had been fine up until recently, and they started to interpret it slightly here. So at some point, uh, we decided that their interpretation was not acceptable. And so we put them on notice that starting next year, we're gonna either look to renegotiate the contract or, um, entertain a contract with another community college. Um, because we are not yet to the point where we can be our own community college, but that's the goal, that's what we've been working towards. Um, and in the meantime, EAC said, you know what? We're not going to offer classes this year to new students. But the contract still provides for the teach-outs. So if you started a program in a, in a degree program or a certificate program, they have to contract so you have to have them complete your coursework so you can give your certificate or your associate's, whatever that might be. So these facility uses would still be needed, even if we haven't come to an agreement on the contract because they have to fill the tail end of their contract. So that's why, even though we know that there's something going on between GCC and EAC and they're not in agreement, this, they still have to do this with them to teach the classes that are already in progress. If that happens.
That, no, no, thank you, I just, I love constituents asking what was going on under their farming now. So I wanted to clarify that to the public, both myself, so.
So I guess it's just a clarification, so even though the contract said you did, they did terminate the contract in twenty fourteen, they still have to honor for two additional years to, to complete these courses that are.
Right, so they have to, they, they can't just cut students off after they've started. So once they got their foot in the door and they're in a program, so the student, I would imagine that if the student drops out and then they wouldn't necessarily have that opportunity. But for all the students who stay in the program that are trying to finish the program, they have to provide a way for them to complete their program.
Thank you. So, Pat Mayor, I motion for, uh, four, B and four C. Second.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the date for the meeting on the college is the July twenty-fifth?
July twenty-fifth.
Okay, okay, just checking.
So we have a motion of second for pool items four, B and C, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go Dave, you're thinking, we'll get that. Thank you. Your business, we have consideration to approve renew annual membership of PHI care to be offered to all benefits or retaining city pay benefits and extending membership to residents of city households for a total annual amount up to see nineteen thousand dollars and to request to waive section two that four destination a prior discussion report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so we, we did this last year where we both cover our employees and everyone who's, uh, a resident in the city. Um, it's changed a little bit, so I'm gonna toss it to Shelley to explain, uh, the, this is a combination of both for our employees and our purchase for city residents. But I think we need to move the number up by five thousand.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we didn't have the information, we put the agenda together, so PHI has just provided us with their renewal, uh, contract with, with numbers. So, uh, tonight we're asking you to, uh, renew the coverage for, um, residential coverage for two thousand six hundred and ninety-four addresses at seven dollars per household for a total of eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars for residential coverage. And the benefit, the employee benefit will be for a hundred and nineteen employee addresses at forty-five dollars per address. Uh, and that total would be five thousand three hundred and fifty-five. So tonight we're asking for a grand total of twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. And this would be coverage for both, uh, employees and, uh, city of globe residents.
And, and Mr. Members, what's that?
The first total was for, uh, residents, about two thousand six hundred and ninety-four addresses for a total of eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, the difference, the, the coverage for members of the city or for residents who live in the city, um, is for if they, they need an air flight within the county. The coverage that we have for employees, if they need an air flight within the state. And so we're paying a little bit more, a little bit broader coverage if people travel and everything like that, cause it may, you know, so, um, and this is, we, I, I think exactly what we did last year. Yes.
And each household, or, each household has the option to upgrade off of that seven dollars, correct? That is a lot.
I don't know that the, a, a non-city employee could upgrade to the state. I, I think within the company, I think they could, uh, initiate them, themselves and go to the company and get the, the higher level of cover. And, and I know that we've had a two, maybe, um, three, I, I, I know that we've had employees who have taken advantage of this multiple times, or multiple employees, I mean.
I'm just one thing that I didn't know until we had one of our finance subcommittees meet. Um, cause, uh, we had SIBO group here that was, um, part of this negotiation. But, um, apparently our insurance still covers the flight, but not all the costs. So they have like a agreed amount that they will pay. Um, and so, um, what this does by us having it is that the employees, or the, the patients part is waived. Um, so if there's insurance, they still seek to get paid by the insurance company, but then they don't pursue the person for the difference. So it's still a great advantage.
The, uh, the, the employee is, we're still county or is it statewide, is that what it is? What's the difference?
So the, the employee is, i- if they need to be flown anywhere within the state, if they, if they have their, um, their need, let's say they're in Yuma or something like that and they need to be flown to, um, to Maricopa County or something like that, I believe that's how that would work. They have that broader coverage. And that was a package that, that they had brought forward. Uh, and as we recall, originally we started with the, the employee only coverage. And then as an, uh, additionally, they brought the, the heal accounting coverage. And, and I figured we just keep with what we've had. I mean, we could, we could, I mean, many employees are, are residents of, of Globe and could advantage, take advantage of the, the base coverage. But, um, that is something that we can look at in the future, but right now I, we're gonna continue with the, the levels that we did last year.
Is there any way that we could track if there was anybody flown under our insurance in the past year or, you know?
Just by, just by knowing about it, I know there've been, been more than one instance. Um, I, I didn't pull numbers, it, it, and you gotta be careful when you're pulling numbers on that, but we have taken advantage of it more than once.
Do you have a couple of questions for Chief Roberts? Yeah, I guess my question is availability of aircraft of PHI. I know that they have a contract with the reservation and are they available? A lot of times you feel, because I'm a scene caller, what, and what's the next closest unit? Are they a secondary? If they're not available, do we get a native of flight or do we get an air of PHI?
So, to talk about locally, um, on scene calls, um, with, with PHI being the only aircraft currently based in the area, we have noticed, uh, an increased challenge in getting, in getting that aircraft to scenes. We don't see the availability that we have in, in past with, with helicopters, with, with a PHI helicopter that's based over. The, the other question associated with that, um, outside of aircraft from the valley, the, the next closest, I believe, is an air methods aircraft. But with a request, your distances typically aren't gonna be that much. Your ETAs aren't gonna be that much different, um, for, for a number of aircraft. So, uh, the, once we, once we get into, once we get into aircraft from the valley, usually we see within a matter of a couple of minutes of, of each other in terms of ETAs from, from where they're coming from. But it, you know, it definitely has been become more challenging to get, to get an aircraft here in a time and manner. But, you know, when you're, a, a lot of times what happens is those patients will go to the Cola Valley. If we have extended ETA to get that patient to Cola Valley, in turn, they'll seek an aircraft from there. And there's a little bit more flexibility, number one, they're, they're at a definitive level of care. Number two, then, then they, they have a little bit more time because that patient is gonna go through a, a process to prep them and make sure they're stable prior to flight. And so that gives them a little bit more opportunity to, it, it's not as critical where that aircraft is coming from in terms of minutes and seconds.
Your methods, you talk about that one in Florence?
Air methods is, their, air methods is in Florence, uh, Toronto, where the other bases are, there's, there's one base to add, if I'm not mistaken, Ironwood. I believe this is another one that's, is based out of Ironwood.
Falcon Field?
Falcon Field.
I just request that, uh, if we do this in the future, that we also look at air methods and native air and see what kind of process they have. I mean, if we're not getting, really it kind of defeats the purpose if we're, if we don't have the availability to take, to transport our patients, we're paying this insurance. You know, they're still gonna get, if they get a, an air method, they're gonna get billed unless they have a different process. I think we should do, expand our research beyond PHI.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, we have requests to weigh the rules, but, um, I'd be happy to, to move this to the next available meeting. And that'll give us time to, to get some additional answers. I, I, you know, that we, we can, uh, easily, I think we can, uh, wait two weeks and, and do the game.
Coverage expires on the thirtieth.
Right, the, the, our, our current coverage expires on the thirtieth.
On the smart?
Yeah, it's, yeah. So if you, if you wanna, but if you wanna wait, we can, we'll be back on the, possibly on the fifth or the eleventh.
Can I ask another question again? Of, all the flights that come out of our area, what percentage goes to PHI?
Out, without, I can dig into the data at a hard time. I can tell you on scene calls, we've estimated, we've estimated forty percent of the calls. And again, that's, that's just a, that's just a standing here yes, without digging, without digging.
Not even quite half end up flying with PHI?
Half end up flying with an aircraft outside here. Whether it's PHI, whether it's air methods, what, whatever, whoever the provider is.
Oh, so it could, so that.
It, it still could be, it still could be, you know, it still could be a PHI aircraft. But when, when we have, when this aircraft is no longer available, then, then we start, we need to, services out.
I would think when you have a delayed response like you're in VR, we have a car accident, it's something to do, request that PHI helicopter, cause you had that opportunity, but you can't do it on the scene call. You, yeah, on the scene calls.
So, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I just confirmed, uh, there've been two instances this past year that employee, uh, that we've used it with our employees.
Well, where did then, yeah, yeah, it's age two, one or two.
Uh, yeah, so, again, this is a hypothetical question, but do you think we're getting those kinds of numbers chief? Because we are in a role here.
The, one thing that I will say is the number of flights that we use on scene calls has reduced drastically. As, as the cert, as the services of Cobra Valley Regional Medical Center have increased. And as we, we've experienced some change in our, in our protocols and how we go about, that, how we go about approaching scene calls with, with flights, that number has reduced, has reduced drastically. Where we used to see, we used to see a, a higher volume of flights out of here. We now have, uh, we now have the ability of, of a cat lab, um, at least during a given period of time during the day. And we've used that a number of times, um, for, even for our own employees where they, where they've gone to a cat lab immediately here and been treated for, for cardiac related events. So we've seen a drastic reduction in flights. But on the other hand, on the other hand, we see a number of those flights that end up being aircraft from outside of here. So, did that answer your question?
Um, it did, I mean, it made me think differently about, um, why the numbers, the response are where they are, forty percent. Yes, uh, and it's, I guess that's a good thing that, you know, locally we're having the abilities in the hospital setting and, and out on scene to be able to treat to a higher level. Um, and, and limiting those, those air flights.
The number of service, that was, uh, cardiac events were a major, were a major period of flights previously, now at least during, you know, typically during weekday, weekday hours, weekday normal business hours that, that cat lab is a big one for.
Really? That's encouraging. You know, Mayor, I just took a comment, we can, we can go down however you want, but. you know, without insurance, one flight would probably be $4,000.
Oh, no, no, it's like 60.
The, the, but the, but the, their portion.
Cover all that we can cover, even at 40% of this cost, and if it saved one person's life, it's well worth it. Um, so, but I, I also agree with Mayor's comment that maybe, maybe we could do a little bit of homework in the, you know, the following year and see if there's something after that we can strengthen our, our capabilities here with air flights.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, maybe we need to have two contracts with two different vendors. You know, that might be.
This is a great resource for our, our staff. You know, to have the, the comfort to know that if you need that, that, like, it's covered. I just hope we do that.
40%.
But, um, you know, it's, when it comes to the medical care and things like that, I'm, I'm like to have all the best and have all the resources at our, at our disposal, but we only do what we can with what we have. And again, I applaud the hospital and, and first responders, uh, in here in Christ. Our capabilities to, to treat, uh, the needy people, so, I know, I'm okay. Thank you, Chief.
Well, then I, it sounds like we're going to maybe look through some of the research, but since this is, um, going to hand at the end of the month, I would go ahead and move to approve the renewal and to waive the prior discussion clause section two dash four.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, Johnson, um, Shipley, can you add the stipulation? Yeah. Yep.
Second.
Motion second for approval of item five A is ready for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose nay, you oppose aye, motion passed. Thank you. Uh, five B, consideration discussion to approve IG eight twenty-three dash zero 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 nine two eight zero dash I between ADOT and the city of Globe to accept the state of Arizona appropriation and the amount of $3 million, $501,100 for the sidewalk construction along Jessa Road and Six Year Canyon Road, and approve a contingency match in the amount of $158,000 to be funded through the absent excise tax, capital outlay construction, account number twelve dash eighty dash five two two zero zero.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm going to start with this, and if, if, if there's anything I can't answer, we'll, we'll, we'll turn to public work staff. But the, um, about two years ago, we, we started working with, um, uh, the Rural Transportation and CAG, and had a list of, of projects, um, that, that we were looking forward to, to trying to fund. They, the first year, I think they, um, had trouble with, with why anybody would say we need sidewalks. Uh, I think the state legislature believed that everybody already had sidewalks and couldn't, they believed that we may not have. Um, we, we, everybody, they, they didn't pass much that year, um, and, and so we pushed, uh, hard again. I think Councilman Pastor with, with Jerry Barnes and a couple of people down to, to a, a CAG event. Uh, and, and I will tell you, this is, um, uh, due credit to, to Representative Cook, who pushed this really hard, and, um, he's head of the transportation, uh, House Transportation Committee. Uh, and, and there are many projects that were, were approved. It was, the, the stars aligned. But this is, uh, it, it'll benefit the county also, but it's primarily coming, it's coming through us. And it is a, a, a allotment of money, isn't, a fed, a state allocation. And you have the contract? Okay, and, and the requirements are that we, um, uh, this IGA that we have now is that, um, let's see, the parties agree that, that after the agreement is executed, the state will issue a warrant or a payment uh, to the local agency in the amount of, um, $3,501,100 for the project. Um, the local agency will complete the project in accordance with laws, uh, 2023 first regular session, chapter, um, 135 and, and Senate bill, and that is that it is used for what it was stated for, which is side, sidewalks, uh, along that road. And after the project completion, submit written certification to local public agency section at AZDOT.gov. Um, and it'll be completed in accordance. So, so this is, uh, a, a, um, they're empowering us to take it upon ourselves to do what we promised we would do, which is to improve those sidewalks. Um, we did in the initial, um, presentation that was in the CAG, um, uh, overview, we, we offered a match of, uh, 158,000, 4.3%, and so we were allocating that if needed. Uh, we see as kind of a match or contingency in there. Um, but, but we take this money, we do the project, we, and we report back. And, um, it's, uh, it's a lot like the Connie's Bridge money, where we just have to take the money and put it to good use. And so we're, we're thankful to, uh, you know, the state, to the, the governor who signed this, the, to the, um, the state to put it together, and to David, uh, Dave, Representative Cook, who, who, um, you know, was, was really uh, key to getting this, this across the finish line. And, uh, the, the ADOT says they want to move quickly on this. It's, uh, uh, we do, we don't want to waive the rule. We want to bring this back one more time. We want this to be approved into the, the 24, 23, 24 budget, and so we're asking for you to, to just move this forward to the next meeting.
Did we receive the money or?
No, no, we need to sign the IGA first. We don't want to receive it before July 1st.
If there are any questions or comments, I move to move this to the press council meeting in the light of final approval. Second.
Motion second for approval of item five B is ready for discussion. I would, I would just like to personally thank Representative Cook for pushing this along and, uh, holding Globe, uh, close to his, his heart and his vest and, and his wallet, not his wallet, but his state's wallet. Uh, and being able to provide this for us, um, I think it's a, a great sign of, uh, his leadership in taking care of our nation.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Maria.
Uh, just a quick backstory. My pastor was asked all of a sudden at that interview, he was at, and it was pressed upon him, and he sweated through that. For about four hours.
Yeah.
And kept muttering to himself, I don't want to pull this off. Muttered the points. He did it and pulled it off, and here we are today. So, kudos to my pastor.
You know.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, thank you.
Go talk to the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose nay, you oppose aye, motion passed. Item five C, discussion and consideration of case number G dash one three dash zero two, a request for a 229 square foot wall sign pursuant to, pursuant to zoning code fourteen dash thirteen dash twenty E one, located at twenty twenty-two, or twenty-two fifty, US Highway sixty, assessive departure number two oh six oh four zero one zero, from an Arizona fitness.
And Mr. Mayor, I think we have, um, Dana on the, the Zoom. Uh, Dana, can you help us reveal the speaker? Hey Dana, can you hear us?
Hey, thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Conyers, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we, I think we can.
Excellent. As the agenda item read, um, this is another request for an oversized sign. An oversized being, uh, your current code allows for wall signs up to 100 square feet and over 100 square feet, 100 square feet and over, uh, one single sign would require council approval, and that's why this is for you. Um, you see on the screen the location of that former Arizona fitness, uh, facility, uh, here, uh, next door to the T-Mobile unit, uh, T-Mobile suite. Um, as the agenda item states, it's requesting, uh, they are requesting, um, 229 square feet. The total, total lineal footage of the frontage, uh, let me back up, uh, so businesses are allowed, uh, two square feet per each one lineal foot of building front that they have on the property. This building is 114, this unit in this situation, and when it's multiple tenants, we just look at their leased space footage. Uh, this one's 114 and a half lineal feet, so that would allow 229 total square feet of wall signage to be located anywhere on the building walls. Um, so that said, uh, you see the proposed, uh, sign location for Anytime Fitness there. Uh, below, on top, um, below, you see the existing, uh, and former Arizona fitness business, uh, sign there. Uh, as well as they do, it also, um, have a roof mounted sign that I think you've all probably seen over that front, uh, on in the area there that's advertising their, their website. Uh, so this proposal from Anytime Fitness will remove that existing, uh, roof sign off of the roof, and, uh, they're also proposing to obviously paint the building. Um, the Arizona, the existing Arizona fitness sign does have that red banding and sign area around it that I think leaves it to appear even larger than it is. Um, this sign, the existing Arizona fitness sign alone, uh, is about, about 20 square feet larger than was being proposed by Anytime Fitness. Um, so that said, uh, staff is recommending council approve this, uh, for a few reasons. And previously, we definitely identified a big box retail, uh, because of the scale and their setbacks from the roadways tend to justify a larger sign. This is in a big box, it's about a 14,000 square foot unit. Uh, however, it did setback to a extent, uh, from the roadway and then also that large. You know, there's probably 100 lineal foot or, I'm sorry, about 75 lineal foot of this void wall, wall plane there. Um, they're proposing to use some sort of basic blocking to add some color to the background, but not, uh, something like Arizona fitness sign currently has with that, that contrasting color to really stand out that sign. So I think overall, it, it will have less of an appearance than, um, uh, than 20 square foot smaller than the Arizona prison sign. That makes sense. Uh, with that, staff is recommending approval, and, uh, staff also, if council wishes to waive the rule uh, for this item in the motion, you know, we support that. Do you have any final questions to add?
Renan, you have a question?
Um, yes, uh, I'm just curious as to, since they already have a sign that's actually driven enough, wouldn't, why wouldn't they just do grandfathered in and maybe just change the name?
Mayor Conyers Shipley, whenever you're removing a sign, that's, that's no longer a legal non-conforming sign. Um, it was, it's, so any replacement of that sign or alteration to the existing Arizona fitness sign, uh, if it were, uh, yeah, any alteration depends to the extent, but, uh, there would likely be required either coming for you to get approval or, um, uh, or beat the code. Uh, because it's a complete replacement, it's essentially every sign.
Okay.
Dana, is this, uh, sign also going to be lit, and is that the color of the building you're going to paint?
Uh, that's what I understand, yes, correct. And just to point out, that font is obviously much smaller than the existing font. If you were just to calculate the area of the text, there are Anytime Fitness words, uh, except, um, they would equal about 78 square feet. So there's a lot of room space because of that character in the middle, the logo. Um, and then you also have that training expression. So I think the, uh, actual appearance isn't as imposing as the 229 square feet towns.
Mr. Mayor, if there are other questions or questions, I'd like, I motion to, um, approve the Anytime Fitness sign as presented by applicant, case number G dash twenty-three dash O two, and waive the prior discussion rule.
Second.
We have a second, a first and a second on item five C, is ready for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose nay, you oppose aye, motion passed. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Dana.
Item D, consideration to approve contract number PS dash two zero two four dash zero zero three with Osich. Consulting for financial services, not succeed in amount of 108,000. In addition, the city will pay 5% for service-related incident, incidentals. This contract will be approved for one-year period to be funded from account number ten dash five five dash five one two two five, against straight consultant, and request to waive section two dash four dash N A prior discussion recall.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, um, like I say, we, we've, um, we've, we've all learned through, through everything going on that, that, um, keeping quality employees is, is good, uh, you know, the, the transition and, and training up. Um, we have been, um, uh, you know, working through rebuilding our finance department. Uh, since the, for this budget cycle, we have been working with Pat Walker, our, um, historic financial consultant. Um, and one of the people that, that she had contacted, contacted, contracted with, uh, was Dennis Osich, um, who is, is here tonight. Uh, Pat Walker is attempting to retire, and we are, we are one of her last two contracts. Uh, in, in talking with Pat and talking with Dennis, um, we are, we are, uh, going to, uh, keep a very small contract with, with Pat Walker and move forward with a, a contract, um, with Dennis Osich to oversee our financials. Um, this is not a contract for a financial director. Uh, this is a person that's going to, um, help us, um, uh, get our books and keep our books, uh, in, in pristine condition. Um, and I will, at that point, kick it to Dennis if you want to step up and introduce yourself, your, your, uh, kind of your history and, um, and, and your scope for this contract.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, so I'm Dennis Osich, so I'm the founder and owner of Osich Consulting. I have been in, uh, public accounting for over 26 years, and, um, I'm a licensed CPA in the state of Arizona. I've worked with, um, 50 to 100 cities and towns across Arizona over that 26-year period. Um, largely, I did auditing early in my career and did more consulting. Um, and then recently, back in, um, beginning of March, um, I actually sold my ownership in, uh, the, the, actually it's International CPA uh, and I started my own consulting, really to focus on working with Arizona governments, um, helping them just to try and, you know, get some things cleaned up and help them to do some of the audit preparation. And then I'm also providing CFO services. So unlike what I'm actually going to do here, um, I'll be doing a lot of oversight, but I am doing some CFO services for other governments across Arizona as well, so I do that. In addition, uh, to some of the audit prep and some of the cleanup that I do. Um, like I said, my experience is pretty extensive as far as from, you know, consulting from an audit perspective, and I think that's one of the things that my firm really brings is sort of both perspectives. Um, it brings a perspective from the audit side of it, but also internally. Uh, I have, me personally, and I have, uh, people that work for me that also work, um, in or have worked as like CFOs or controllers for, for other city governments as well. So, um, well, the scope of my audit would be, as I, as Paul had mentioned, is not to come in and be the finance director, but rather to help get the city on track. Um, and as I put it, to keep the train on the tracks as, as we go forward, um, and then to do some cleanup on some of the, uh, the past items as well. Um, so we'll, we'll be working on that and keeping that, um, you know, working from back end to the front end and getting this train on the right track. So, that's, that's where I would come in.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we, we need to get caught up on, on, on everything that, that's out there. Um, get our, our numbers to, um, get set up for the, the 22 audit, and then get, uh, make sure that we're, we're reconciled fully for the 23. And at the same time, we need to, to put the structures in place to make sure we stay caught up on our reconciliation and everything like that. And, um, and Dennis is going to help, help us and, and as we assign those people and, and get those processes going. Um, so we, again, he's, uh, he's there, he's our backstop, and, and our, our goal at the end of this is, is that on any given month, we can give you up-to-date and current financials. Um, you know, it, it, financials are a moving, a moving target, but at least at the, at a monthly, uh, a monthly competence level.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I've had comments from the general public why we need some personnel or contracts for accounting services. When you take a federal dollar, you are responsible for spending it and tracking it and completing the project. That takes professionals, that takes technicians. And as we go into the future, I expect to see more hiring with professionals to complete these assignments, and I welcome that opportunity, but we have to practice due diligence in keeping the federal government happy. Uh, we will continue to do our best to tap federal dollars, but we will do. But we will do so in a diligent manner to track the funding and to justify the spending so that the federal government people will sign off on the work that we're doing. It is very important that we do this. It's not something that I call a luxury, I call it a concerted effort at due diligence. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Renato?
Yeah, so actually when I was listening to you, you were talking about it says up to a year. I'm thinking, oh, the audit will be now and then we're working on the budget. But you anticipate that you'll be helping us throughout the whole year?
Throughout the year as well, correct. Yeah, so the twenty twenty two audit prep is what we're getting ready. So the auditors will come in, do the audit prep. Obviously, the June thirty, twenty twenty three year is coming to an end as well. So there's going to be audit prep that's required for that. In addition, in twenty twenty three, there's a new governmental accounting standards that's required to be implemented. It's subscription based accounting essentially. So for any type of subscription based software that you have, it's a new recording model. So that will have to be implemented as well. So I'll have to talk to Paul about, you know, sort of doing an inventory of what some of those subscription based items are. And that'll, that'll be part of the implementation as well as, as I mentioned, getting some of the things wrapped up from the twenty twenty three year that need to be a little bit caught up or reconciled as well.
So, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, we think that the contract will be front loaded. And we'll talk more about this when we talk on Thursday about the budget. A lot of the work will take place in the first six months and then it'll be more monitoring this going afterwards. We are not budgeting for a finance director this year. We are budgeting for this. If we can find, if we come across someone who is as qualified as Dennis or can take this over, then we will, we will pretty much swap this out. So it, we, we can budget for a finance director, which we've been not successful in finding. Or for Dennis is a high level person that can manage our books. And if we can find a finance director that can make Dennis bored, then we'll just swap out the money and put that towards the salary.
Do you anticipate in six months you can have this equal spot? Do you hope to accomplish this, say, your on track and moving forward? I'm not going to promise that in six months. What I told Paul is I said anywhere from six to twelve months in order to get everything caught up and in place. So, you know, I'm not going to guarantee that it's at six months. I mentioned six to twelve months. And that's why, you know, we put this contract together for a twelve month period. Because I do think it's going to take some time. And to be honest with you, without actually getting into some of the numbers, you know, I couldn't say for sure that it'd be six months.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, in a financial, municipal financial director that I've worked with a long time ago and has kind of followed, he had a saying, there are conservative finance directors and there are unemployed finance directors. And so, so pinning down, what we, what we did talk about was the fact that we're working forward on the twenty two audit and we hope that we can get them in house very soon and have that to counsel before Christmas. That'll take care of half of what the battle that we're trying to lock in. And so we'll have that, that'll bring us a year forward because that's the gold standard. And then Dennis will be working on finishing off the twenty three year. So, but Dennis will be key in getting us ready for that. And Pat's done a lot of work towards that. But when they, you know, those four days when they come in on site and they're asking questions and everything, those are wonderful days.
Just a comment, piggybacking on Mariana, what you said, you know, it's true. And ten years ago, you could run the city with a couple of finance, of people within that department. But the past eight years, eight years, if you look at our operating budget and look at our total budget as now, the amount of money that's coming in from the federal, from the beds, from the state and everything else, it's pretty amazing how much, you know, is coming in and that all needs to be accounted for. And we can't take the chance, that's all we do, to be able to get us to that level.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge there is another finance director in the audience in the back that is very, very touted, very committed professional to Hila County. But, you know, there's always a home here if you ever, you know, we're a fun group.
Just one other question forward, is your bike percentage of them, what is that?
I will let you explain that.
Yeah, so much of the work that I do is from a remote standpoint. So some of that is just, it's my technology fee and the investment that I put in in order to do some of that work remotely, which ultimately saves on mileage and having to go back and forth and hotel, so.
And, and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is, Dennis is not going to keep office hours once a week, whatever. He will come up on an as needed basis. I think that most times he'll need to come out if we're doing a presentation. But, but we'll, you know, it's with the technology and his ability to zoom in and with Danny Guttenham setting up to pretty much see everything that we need to be seen. He can, he can work remotely, we can communicate very well. But there are times when it's good to have you up here, especially when addressing council. And those be the times that we bring Dennis up.
So, the contract would be with your, from your team. So would be, the city, you'd be working with, I'm sorry, the city would be expensing a team rather than just a person in division, correct?
This is independent from, right now Dennis is working with us as part of Pat Walker's team. And this would be now Dennis is coming forward as he will be the contractual lead and it'll be his team that he builds. And, and these, they all have connections and people come and go and are assigned and reassigned. But Dennis is our point of contact.
Yeah, and just to make that point, so if there's any presentation that needs to be done, any communication with council, that all comes through me. So I'll always be the one to present to you, whether it's via Zoom or in person, or if you have any questions for sure.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would request we waive the rules. Dennis has, his contract will pick up on July one. He was up here already, meeting with both finance staff, people related to finance and then department administrative people who interact with finance. So he can get a handle on who everybody is, what their role is. And pretty much anybody that knows Casell or should know Casell is, oh, and that's the thing, he is a Casell whiz. Is so happy that you are very, very familiar with our financial software. So, but he's already been diving in this afternoon to meet everybody and get contact information and get set up if you support this contract.
Mike, I think it's vital that, not only with what, you know, I just firmly believe that without a sound financial, our city's financial stability, with all the movement and the economic development that we're pursuing as a council and everything that we're pushing for, even the trip to DC. You know, sound financial status is the lifeline of what we're trying to accomplish. And so we really have to make sure that we do what we have, what we can to secure that. And we all know that when it comes out of town, we don't like to hear the little things about where we could do better. So I just feel like this is, this is, of all the things, you know, I, we talked about, you know, support services out with our citizens, you know, with fresh responders and public works and things like that. But those are the physical tangible things that we all cherish. But to really have a sound footing on our finances is so key to our sustainability. And I don't think we can look any different way. So I just want to make that comment, whether it's, you know, and I applaud you because you've been having go after, go after, go, and find somebody to help us.
We've been trying different angles, yeah.
But I appreciate, you know, you just staying on it and, you know, trying to find that, trying to find that position that where we, where we need to accomplish. So, at least I can say that when we're talking sixty seven million dollar city budget, that's not, that's just not a problem project that would sustain what it really is. So, that's my script.
Is that a motion with it?
Yeah, I think I could roll right into the motion. I'll, I'll bring the motion that we contract PS twenty twenty four zip dash zero zero three Osich Consulting and Financial Services for the amount to exceed a amount of one hundred eight thousand dollars and five percent for service related funding from account number ten dash fifty five dash five one two 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 five administrative consultants. And request to waive, waive the prior discussion rule.
Second. The motion second for approval of item five B, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay, any abstaining, most of the time. Thank you. Item E, we have discussion and consideration to approve bed tax distribution request for the Southern Hina County EDC for the second and fourth quarters of fiscal year twenty one for twenty five thousand five hundred and fifty six dollars and sixty cents. First and fourth quarters for fiscal year twenty two for fifty one thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars and forty three cents. And the first third quarters of fiscal year twenty three in the amount of twenty six thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty nine cents from account number ten dash five one dash five one nine one zero general fund community organization, Southern Hina County EDC. And request to waive section two dash four dash ten A prior discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. In two thousand nineteen, good timing, right?
Yeah.
We, we, the city saw an opportunity to help an organization that was really crucial to building an ecosystem for economic diversity and prosperity throughout the Southern Hina County region. So we, the city, we were engaged with RCAC and moving forward with the building of our economy's condition. And we were working side by side with the EDC. And at that time, their executive director Karen Deacox. And we really saw such, such a chance to really help to bring more, build more organizational capacity into this, into this group that would benefit not just the city of Globe, but our entire region. Because as we all know, rising tides raise all ships. And so we approached the EDC board, again, this was in two thousand and nineteen, and offered an opportunity to provide myself as executive director support, so administrative support services basically. So that the amount that was going to the EDC as the bed tax, which did support the salary of a part time ED, now that could be used to drive actual economic development initiatives. And so it's always been our intention, we were very clear with the EDC board at that time, that we were coming in, we were helicoptering in, I'm going to cut the page, I think, and to help build again organizational capacity and strengthen our community relationships with our external stakeholders. And I'm happy to say that as of right now, we received four commitments from area stakeholders who are ready to engage with the EDC and become a, basically a line item in their budget and offer multi-year organizational support so that we can step away and then we can bring on another team member into economic development for the region. So right now, we're working with RCAC to develop that job description. And we really see this moving very quickly. I'd like to say that we would have this person in place by the end of the year. We're halfway through the year right now. So we, and we have had interest expressed from some very high talent actually in the area and outside of the area that really see an opportunity to come into, into the region and bring their experience and their energy. And absolutely, we would welcome another team member to help drive economic development within the region. And I'm sure you've read some of our organizational activity report that was attached to the agenda item. Just kind of color that in a little bit more. So the three business loans that we've lent out in the last three and a half years, that was ninety eight thousand dollars. And that went to two new business startups and one business expansion. And we currently have four applications in house that are getting ready to go to our finance committee for processing. Also currently in process of applying for additional USDA funding to expand our micro loan program. We began with a hundred thousand, it's nearly all lent out and we have more and more interest coming in. So we are applying for additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars to expand that program. And we're seeing such an uptick activity, inactivity from First Friday. It's really been an incredible incubator for us. So we actually are working with, through the EDC and the micro loan program and here at the city of Globe to assist with site selection. Three of these, these food vendors are looking to become working board, which is extremely exciting. And I've actually brought, this is Mary Velling, and she is our contractor prior. She's our hired gun accountant. It took a minute for us to really come in and see where this organizational, this organization was as far as can we afford an ED. Because at the time, the bed tax would be the only source of revenue for this organization. And so with Mary, it's been such a pleasure to work with her and she's the Hina County Finance Director. And that was awesome, Paul, you know.
Always, always be closing.
That was great. I don't know, James might not speak to us after this. And so I'd like to invite Mary to offer her view on the organization and the work that we've done to get to this point and be able to move forward and step away and have another community partner. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Linda. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Linda said, starting in twenty nineteen, the city of Globe began providing really outstanding economic development support to the entire community through the Southern Hina County Economic Development Corporation. Since then, Linda has stepped in as their executive director over there. She's made a really positive impact, as you've seen with the moonshot events, with First Friday, with other programs that you have invested in. And it's allowed the city of Globe and the EDC to walk hand in hand and live the same values that go with sustainable economic development. And as I'm sure you've heard many times, right, the economic development game is a long game. So throughout the past, basically, four years that Linda has been stepping in and the city has been stepping in, the EDC has waited to provide these bed tax reports because they wanted to make sure that they were living the bed tax values that this council and previous councils have expressed were really necessary to be successful in the community. And it seems as though the EDC has achieved those goals at this point. And so the EDC is pleased to present first through fourth quarters of twenty twenty two, second through fourth quarters of twenty twenty one, and first through third quarters of twenty twenty three for a total bed tax distribution of a hundred and three thousand this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. It's been a pleasure to work with the EDC. I'm sure Mayor Gamaris can testify to the improvements that the EDC has had by better engaging with the local business community, collaborating closely with a variety of innovative thinkers and new ideas. And it's my understanding that starting next month, the EDC will be back to meeting in person for the first time since before COVID, which is a huge win and really reflects the investment that each member of that board is making in your community.
Wanted to expand upon something Mary had said. That when we came in to offer the support to the EDC, we also moved forward with an up, actually, we created a strategic action plan that the EDC did not have before. And we've done two updates since then. So we really have taken the time to build a strong foundation for this organization. And hopefully, we feel, we feel very good that we're living in a better place than where we found it. And we can look to them to be a partner with us, not just with the city, but with the town of Miami and. but with the town of Miami and, and the other communities within the Southern Haley County region to, to really drive economic development here. Thank you.
I want to applaud you very much, while you're married, and that's what we're really going, of getting things in order, getting it to where we are now. Um, just, but I do have one, one question as we've stated before with previous bed tax organizations is, from going forward, we're finessing these bed tax requests coming in in a timely fashion, not one through four.
Absolutely, correct.
Thank you.
And that, and that's before we hired a full-time, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Fernando.
I think one of my biggest frustrations with, uh, economic development is that, um, the public seems to demand a budget. How many, what did you produce? Right, but that's not really how EDC works. Economic development is about creating, like, the right temperature of the water to make sure that everything is there. So, that way, when you come and you have an idea or you want to start a business, there's a great place to start because they have a lot of information access, they know who owns property, you know, they, they know where infrastructure is. And if you're coming from somewhere else and you don't know the lay of the land, that's probably one of the best places to start. And so, it's not necessarily, you give them money and you're going to have twelve jobs. It just doesn't work that way. And I just get frustrated because people get frustrated and I'm like, that's not what we're buying. Um, so, I appreciate everything you guys do and, um, and we need you, so keep going.
I just want to comment, I'm the current president of the Southern Haley County, which I'm termed out, which is good.
Actually, you're not.
But I want to commend, and we're stepping in and, and really moving this organization forward. I mean, this is huge, uh, to have the stakeholders in place now to, for the future. That's not for a part-time, uh, economic director, it's for a full-time director. The only one, the only one that funded this organization around, like she mentioned, was the, is the bed tax. When you bring in this organization, you're able to hire a full-time EDC director that asks our whole region, our whole community to, for economic development. So, that is truly huge, it really is. And I want to commend Mary, she came in and stepped in and, uh, really just brought our finances so we have a better understanding, or an easier understanding of what we have. It's really difficult. It took a long time to get to this point, I think, really is, is, is in, in finances. So, um, I'll tell you, both, both, both of them have done an amazing job. This is super busy, I know Mary's super busy with what she does also, but taking this additional task force is important. And I think it's time to move on with, uh, outside economic directors who can be some of our pressures.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, we are requesting that you waive the rule on this. We, we have, uh, positioned the money, uh, in this budget year, the, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. And so, we want this, we want this one to hit this side of July one in order to keep everything straight.
And that won't, that won't affect any more audits?
Nope, that's, uh, we, we planned that out. We worked with Pat Walker and Tina and everybody to make sure that we got buckets aligned.
So, Mayor, there are no more comments? Um, I agree to approve the bed tax distribution request for the Southern Haley County EDC for the second to fourth quarters of fiscal year twenty-one for twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty cents for the first to fourth quarters of fiscal year, uh, twenty-two for fifty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-three cents. And the first of third quarters for fiscal year twenty-three, the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents from account number ten dash five one dash five one nine one zero, general fund community organization, Southern Haley County EDC, and request to waive this prior discussion rule.
Second. We have motion second for approval of item five B, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay, any abstaining, no more to that. Thank you. Action item, we have six eight, consideration to approve ordinance CP five, or request rezoning number, or request plus one acre of land from C two intermediate commercial zoning district to T R transitional residential zoning district located at the northeast corner of East South Street and East Maple Street, A P N, two zero five dash one five dash zero five zero A and B, case number Z dash two three dash O two. Shall we agree ordinance eight eight five please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number eight eight five. An ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Globe amending the zoning ordinance of the city by amending the City of Globe zoning map from the intermediate commercial C two zoning district to the transitional residential T R zoning district for a total of two parcels consisting of one acre of land located at the northwest corner of East South Street and East Maple Street in the City of Globe, County of the US, State of Arizona. Is council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
And I think we have Dana on the line.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, this is your second lead of this item. It was on your last agenda where you held a public hearing and we did not receive any comment from members of the public as well. Planning zoning commission recommend council approve this rezoning. Um, they had their public hearing back on the seventh of this month and had no input. I didn't equip one resident prior to that during our citizen review, but they did not have any concern and would just support planning zoning commission hearing for these three, uh, members of the public having support of the zone. For quick to share, just to refresh your memory, move on with your action. Um, this is the, uh, site that we're talking about. It's approximately one acre in total. There are two parcels involved, one parcel being developed with a duplex, the other being vacant. The applicant, uh, would like to develop a C two zoning plan on that lot. Um, the proposed existing zoning is C two, the Oregon states. Uh, you see here in the pink or red, uh, and it's proposed to rezonate T R transitional residential zone in blue, which is consistent with the apartment, uh, neighborhood. But that staff recommends and planning zoning commission, uh, you may announce the direction of council to approve this. Then I don't want to have to respond on question four.
Question four.
Other questions or comments, Mayor? Motion to approve ordinance number eighty-five, rezoning subject properties to the transitional residential zoning district.
Second. Motion second for approval, item, action item six eight, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay, any abstaining, no more to that. Thank you, Dana. Item B is consideration of a grant, quick plan D, transfer the ownership station on Jessa Road to Tri-City Fire District with conditions for council review and possible action to approve. Chief Roberts, I begin with, and Mayor and Council.
Back in April of last year, this item first came before you, uh, for consideration. Chief Renan and, and Tri-City Fire District have been working to do improvements to the Canyon Fire Station. Um, one of the challenges that they faced with that was the ability to receive, um, any type of finances you were to, um, not owning the building. Uh, so that limited what their capacity was to be able to, to make improvements to the facility. This, this deed was originally equipped, and he was originally brought before you. Um, there were some conditions outlined by the council, and the council and mayor wanted to see, uh, within that, within that quick plan deed ensuring, uh, that, that that facility would continue to provide service, um, to the City of Globe and to the residents of the City of Globe, along with those residents of Tri-City Fire District. Some of those conditions include the, that they would need to hook to the, the pending sewer, uh, sewer line project, um, to, as a, as a customer to that, to alleviate not only problems that they had there, but also to, to ensure that, that is that project expanded out, that they took advantage of that. Um, that condition has been met, that, that line is in place there, they're currently going to that. The other conditions revolved around the need for that facility to continue to provide service to the City of Globe. Uh, if it, if it, if they decide to eventually move to a different facility than that, that would look at, that property would look at returning to the City of Globe, it wouldn't be able to sublet the property to, to another entity if it wasn't providing, uh, wasn't providing that service to the community. Thanks to a significant amount of work on the, the part of the co-team, on the part of name and zoning to, to identify a need to parcel out that property, um, a lot of survey work was done with the ongoing sewer line projects, some additional railways were identified, um, things got fine-tuned, and what you have before you is the result of that work that, that came forward and they're seeking, um, we're seeking approval for, for that to go forward under the conditions identified and, and for the facility to be, uh, turned over to Tri-City Fire District so that they can proceed with improvements. And Chief Renan is here in the audience if there are questions.
I think you mentioned on the lease, so if, if, if they choose to abandon that facility that reverts back to the city property, then they'll, you know, that lease.
I believe that chance I didn't.
Yeah, it says there's six months.
That's one six-month period.
Let's see what, yeah. I think they said if you fail to operate your fire station, then we could demand we got, we put it back to us. Or if they give it up, then it comes back. Yeah, I would, I would have moved to, uh, to approve the quick plan D to transfer the ownership of Canyon Fire Station, um, Jesse's, uh, has some other conditions. Um, or, um, according to the conditions we set.
Second. Motion second for approval of item six B, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay, any abstaining, no more to that. Thank you. We have item C, consideration to accept the grant award number GP dash two three dash eight zero dash zero five zero zero six growing margin, technical assistance grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars. This grant will be, will fund strategies to address water conservation in the county.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So glad to be here tonight to, um, talk to you about this, uh, water conservation grant. Um, and it's actually, um, as you know, in March, we partnered with, um, Miami, the township of Miami, and, um, Miami and their fellows went with. And with all that good work that they did at the workshops, we were able to put in for this grant, um, and we will be able to contact with, uh, the planning center for water policy for this region. And so, uh, one of the things that when you go to do water conservation that I've learned is that you need to have policy in place before you actually start, um, uh, moving forward with conservation. And our region doesn't have very much, uh, water policy at all. So, hopefully, with the, the onset of this grant, we'll be able to write for both, uh, township and both the city. And then, um, from there, you know, um, I hate to say it, but the county can dovetail off of that. And so, then the whole region can have water conservation, water policy. Do you have any other questions on this?
Comments, Mr. Mayor?
Good morning, Maria.
I attended on your behalf this seminar, and, uh, as a longtime emergency planner, dovetail last year into many things that I had seen over the years, but one I hold out of all of this is that there's no, there is no planning, there's anything done in this region for water management, uh, as opposed to the rest of the state. There are water management areas across the state. They actively share their information with each other, and as such, they plan for their future. I didn't know that. I, I was at a high level when there was a lot of resource and planning, but I didn't know the, that's the volts. And to see that we are behind the curve, uh, is something we need to, to address. Now, whether or not all the parties in this region who deal with water planning come to this table that this grant is allowing for is not the point. The point is that we jump in, that we educate ourselves about the subject matter, and then we are better prepared to address the future, uh, looking for opportunities to improve our water management and to be able to, to speak the language, if you will, of planning is being done, say, locally by these entities. We have to, we have to do that. As a planner, you spend a lot of time defining things, and this is one of those moments. We realize we've done a lot of improvements to our water management capacity, be it potable water or sewage, but we're not, uh, the state doesn't know what we're doing. We know what we're doing, but we need to demonstrate that we're taking a step in planning for the future. Whether or not other entities will come to the table is not the issue on that. We want to be able to say to the entities that are in this game, the state, the federal entities, that we know what we're doing in this county, at least in this region, and we want to demonstrate that at all times. And to do that by jumping through their hoops of planning. And so, another arena, another planning moment, and we actually got some money out of the home dog, I'm saying, and we need to spend some money on what's called the planning. And this is what I'll obviously, uh, at least the city and the other entities in the region do this kind of planning so we can be better prepared for the future. I don't know what our, our needs are going to be in the future, but today, the learning curve at that seminar taught me a couple things. We, if we fix our leaks, we could support a whole bunch of new submissions. How about that? I'm not kidding. And, and our, our team is to be commended for, um, the information that they're willing to present. That was an eye opener to my day. The most important thing is that we're talking to each other, the town of Miami is, uh, now we're going to, in fact, sharing it with each other. This is how we start, and we're really glad, and this is an opportunity that, that's going to pay for itself in the future with this grant. And that's, that's an opportunity we can't turn down, we need to, in the future. Mr. Mayor, I'm done with that. Thank you for letting me sit.
Thank you, thank you for attending. Uh, Fernando.
I know, Freddie can speak for himself, but it just seems to me like Arizona Water, since they work within all the boundaries, the county, Miami, and, uh, Miami, and the Globe, um, that I hope that you're, would be invited to the table.
Yes, yes, definitely. Um, and just to, to add one more thing about, uh, the significance of this water policy is that once it, once it would come before you and it's made and, and you guys, and as a council, you would pass it, then, and, uh, the same thing likewise over in Miami. And then it becomes a matter of the public record and forum, and then it gets passed to the state of Arizona, so then the state will have a copy of what is happening here on water policy. And, um, so that's just one step further into the state knowing, uh, what we're doing. And, and then when we are able to ask for assistance, then they, oh, well, yes, they, this area has water policy, so yes, we will give them assistance in water conservation dollars, you know, so. It would just set us up at a much higher level in order to achieve more dollars for water conservation.
Uh, Fernando, thanks for mentioning Arizona Water. Uh, I, I think, uh, maybe I'll find we can, I can get you in touch with, um, we do have a water cons, well, we have a Department of Water Resources here in our office, and we, that, actually, we do have a water conservation specialist. Uh, and I will say that we just finished a, um, Facebook or social media landing page, uh, for the area that I also sort of Dr. Valley, which is Orange, with Sandy Row, South of Ranch, all that area. And, uh, Arizona Water is actively going through each of their service areas, regions in the state of Arizona and creating this, this branding that's specific to that region. Uh, so it's not like a overall, you know, one site, one shoot, it's all, it's, it's the, the information and, and the culture of the branding is, is really circled around the communities that they serve. So, I think this would be a pretty good opportunity, uh, to introduce, uh, Arizona Water to, uh, to you, and we have Arizona Water, and hopefully something in this region. It's, it's coming, it's just, you know, we do it systematically.
It's just a baby steps.
Yeah, uh, but we've already, we've already done some branding, uh, we've got one in Patch Junction, uh, But we've already, we've already done some branding. We've got one in Apache Junction, Cassin Rand, Coolidge. We just finished one in Dr. Valley. I have to get you a palm card because I got to even be on the video, so yeah. And it's, it's really cool. I'll get it to you. Anybody who wants to, it's on YouTube. It's on a lot of the social media outlets. And it's not just a one time, one shot thing. It's an ongoing dialogue with the community. And share it and learn it as well from community members. So I think this would be a great opportunity. I'll make sure we get it together.
Okay.
Yeah, welcome.
I'm making motion group. GP-23-80-05006, grant margin, plus this is grant in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
Motion second for approval of item, action item six C, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, Members Council, I think Connie, is this your first presentation to council?
Yes.
Oh. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You know, I think Connie also keeps another part of our team, our whole team, everybody, everyone involved. Now we have somebody that's totally concentrating on our grants.
Yes.
And going out there and taking some burden off Linda for doing that also. It's going to be a big plus. I think she's going to do, I'm part of one team that she's getting going after money and she saves them value. But no, it's a great addition. Thank you Connie.
Connie, people, I just, I mean, I do have palm cards for that, but if anybody's interested, you can look it up on YouTube. Just look up drop by drop.
Drop by drop.
Drop by drop, you know, it's, it's in the Dr. Valley. You'll see pages, you'll see how it's rolling out. We just rolled it out less than a month ago.
Okay.
So it's pretty, pretty interesting. Call for the vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, any abstaining, motion back. Thank you. Item D, discussion consideration of change order number one for CS-2023-0014 with HT four for the Bailey Waterline Project in the amount of $1,636.2 for budgeted funds in account number five zero dash eight zero dash five two two zero zero, water capital outlay construction. We have Vince.
No, no, it's Kenny. Vince was going on to you.
Kenny, Kenny, go ahead.
Members Council. So with the Bailey Waterline Project, earlier this month, a contractor had to do some extra popple and water line. That way you didn't cut off services before you had any water cash. It wasn't, exactly where we had initially. We spent a couple days to remove the extra work. Or is... Any questions?
I got a question. I think you probably answered that before now this, when we do a contract change order, is that part of the contingency or is that above the contingency that we used to use for?
It usually, it was not originally budgeted, so it's a contingency transfer. So that's why it comes back to council because we had used up the money we had originally budgeted to council. So even though it's a small amount.
This one, this one was covered.
Is it, is it part of the, was there a contingency vacant? Okay. So because, so then it's because the contract was capped and not the, it's not the funding, but the, the contract was capped and we're going above the contract cap. So not a contingency, but the contract change.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions or comments, I wish to go through this right.
Second. Motion second for approval of item number six D, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, any abstaining, thank you. We have item D E, discussion consideration of proof change order number one for CS-2023-0061 with regular construction for Apache Peak Booster Rehab Project in the amount of $3,377.8 for budgeted, for budgeted fund in account number five zero dash eight zero dash five two two zero zero, water capital outlay construction. Please put in Vince.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Council. We came to you guys in early June for a contract for our project construction to rehab our Apache Peak Booster Facility. He did a great job out there. He restucked the building. It was a wood sided building and rats and nails were actually eating into it. He restucked the mesh, restucked and painted it. Looks really nice now. He actually raised the roof eight inches. It was sagging to the old lumber that they use when they build that place. He raised it. He fixed the hatch that we can pull our pumps out of the facility. When, during construction, we noticed that there is only one light on the whole building up there. And all four sides of the buildings have something that we may have to touch at night. So we're adding three lights to this building. And the doors, we noticed just, the south side door was just completely, there was no paint on it. It was just all rust. So we decided we need to replace these doors to keep up with the whole building. That's what this change order is for.
Questions, comments?
....................................
Second.
Motion second for approval of action item number six E, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed nay, any abstaining, motion back. Thank you Dana.
Thank you Kenny.
Thank you. Have any, we have any later gen items?
Mr. Mayor, Members Council, we do not.
Second call to the public, if we have anybody.
Freddie, didn't, didn't you want to do a?
Yeah, that's in the meeting.
Schedule meetings.
Yeah.
No, Mr. Mayor.
No? Scheduling the meetings?
There we go. So.
You have some of, you want to go over yours?
We, well, yes, we, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to lay out the context of, of what we're doing with the, with the scheduling of meetings. We had originally scheduled for last Thursday to have a work session with council to roll out the budget. We were not able to meet that deadline. There were, there were, we had gotten many of the items that we hadn't had a chance to vet it through council, not through council, but through staff, make sure we had all our ducks in a row, make sure we had it tight. And so we, unfortunately, we had to cancel that one, reschedule it. Sorry for, to everyone on council for the inconvenience on that. But it's really important with Pat Walker and Tina that they, that they have all their ducks in a row. They're very methodical on many things and there were questions outstanding and they would rather push it than, than bring a product that's not to their standard. So, so we did do that and at the, at the very last minute, we, I'm like, okay, they, they were insistent and I think it was the right thing to do. It does push our budget adoption deadlines back. And so what will happen is we have Thursday, this Thursday at 2:30, that'd be the 29th, will be 2:30 to 5:00, presentation here in chambers, a special work session to roll out the budget. Then we will have, asking council to consider a Wednesday, July 5th, adoption of the tentative budget. This will be a six o'clock meeting, an evening meeting, the day after 4th of July. I know that's kind of awkward too, but it would be a single topic. Then you could, we could look at, you had, you'd see the information. You'd have some time over the weekend, look at it, address any questions, any, any additional requests council had, come back. And the tentative budget is adopting the, the top spending limit. That is the, the maximum we can spend. Now, it still allows us time to move things around internally. We usually have a lot of grant money and so if there's something we missed and want to add, we can, we can do that. I don't think there'll be a lot there as we explained, but, but this is our normal process. We still are within the, the legal limits by adopting the tentative in July. That is something, we haven't done that before, but we are capable of doing that. We're within our, our, our legal limits. And then, just so you know, that will allow us to publish on Wednesday, the July 12th. We will publish the tentative budget worksheets. These are the Department of Revenue worksheets that are, are legal numbers. And, and the notice of the public hearing that we'll have on seven, possibly 7/25, we might move that to 7/26. But we'll, we'll talk about that. And then in, for two weeks in the, in the paper. Then we were going to come back and adopt, let's see. So then we're looking at coming back on the 19th and doing the tentative. So that'd be from the fifth, so our gap would be from the fifth to the 19th. And that is because we wanted to move the meeting on Tuesday, July 25th to the 26th. Because we want to allow everybody to meet the, what's?
I believe we wanted to adopt the final budget on the 20th.
Okay, so, oh, the 20th, that's right. Not that, so Thursday, the 20th, not Thursday, the 19th. Okay. So we'll adopt on the 20th and that'll be the Thursday and then we'll be good. And then we come back and do our property tax after that. So just so, I've already muddled this a little bit.
And that's just going to be the draft, the final budget?
That'll be the draft, the final. Traditionally, we have very few changes. Okay. So, so let me say it again and do a better job at this. July 5th, we'll adopt the tentative. And July 20th, we'll adopt the final. And then the only other change would be to push the Tuesday, July 25th meeting to the Wednesday, July 26th. And then we'll have a tax levy hearing on that one.
We want another meeting on the 26th.
So that.
The 5th, the 20th, and the 26th.
Right. The, the reason for the moving of the meeting on the 25th is because it conflicts with the college town hall. And that is why we're moving that to the, to the Wednesday.
Can you do that?
So is there still a meeting on Thursday?
This Thursday, yes.
I definitely want to.
Yes. Yes.
Is it 2:30 or 5:00?
2:35. So June 29th, July 5th. July 20th, July 26th.
Looking for, trying to figure out like that, but the dates.
The, Mr. Mayor, Members Council, the only afternoon meeting is on this Thursday. All the other ones are 6:00 PM start times.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, the 5th and the 20th are first.
5th, 5th and the 20th are the, are the tentative and final.
The only thing I have to think about, 13 to 17.
Okay.
Oh, shut's. You did miss it. You're done. Get a lot going on.
And so we will, it appears council's positive on all of those changes. And so we will make those adjustments. And Shelley's got this all written down and corrected from my, make sure I have my, my Wednesdays and Thursdays timed, yes.
Can you show me a decent amount of the market space? They make sure. Consideration of any future dead items?
Earlier tonight?
Earlier.
Did I talk about the future agenda?
Was it all?
Yeah, the future meetings. Best memory in the house.
Have you done, it feels like it's been a long time since we talked about your reviews. Are we due to another?
Oh, yeah, that will, we'll talk about that in the future. Let's get this, let's get this, let's get this budget adopted. I'm sure all of us, all of us would be a lot happier once we get, once we get the budget adopted and, and then I'll have my presentation with the kids. Well, did I tell you we're going to do my evaluation out at the pool?
Had all washed out.
So call for a motion to go into E session?
So.
Second. Motion second to go into executive session.
And, and to the, to everyone, we have no action intended when we come back.